Commissioner Smith.
Here.
Commissioner Nesea.
Here.
Commissioner Rock.
Here.
And Mayor Neely.
Here. Uh, will you join me in the, uh, vice seat, please?
Thank you.
I want to apologize for the late start of the meeting. Uh, whenever there's a scheduling problem like this or executive session and so forth, that falls either the fall of the city manager or the city attorney. No. Yeah. Okay. So. 1961. Little Pierre Beauregard opened fire on Fort Sundar Charleston starting a civil war. What I say. That is huge. About 5 years ago, that was 150 years ago. So those were, those are two, uh, two important, uh, periods in our, in our history. And for that, uh, are there any citizen comments?
Yes.
And so we'll have coming forward first Nancy Shearer and Chris Lugo, is that right? If you both could come up and, uh, go ahead and introduce yourselves and indicate whether you're from the Oregon City or not.
You may sit down.
You may, oh, you may sit down. At that point, the microphone is your direction so we can hear you.
Nancy Shearer, I'm King Jackson Street.
My name is Chris Lugo. I live at 1108 Seventh Street.
Are you talking about the same thing?
Uh huh.
Okay, very nice.
Let's go Nancy.
Alright. Um, I'm a board member of Cable Access, it's also known as Willamette Falls TV or Willamette Falls Media Center. And I'm on the board and it's the board's job to oversee the operations of WFTV as outlined in the agreement between Oregon City and Westland. And, um, uh, WFTVs and Media Centers, PEG Station, Cable Access Station, PEG stands for Public Education and Government, I'm sure most of you know this, but maybe our viewers don't. Um, uh, cable access means that the public has access to equipment and training to create, um, and cable broadcasts for free or low cost, uh, free speech ideology. The airwaves are public property and the cable and broadcast corporations who make large profits pay a fee to the public to use the airwaves or the cable, and that's called a franchise fee, which every cable subscriber pays in their monthly bill. And, um, and then let's say in Oregon City collect the franchise fees and they may or may not decide to fund the cable access station, they can keep all the money if they want and their general fund is spent any way they want. Um, Wikipedia says that the principles of PEG access may be mandated by local state government to provide any combination of television production, equipment, training, and airtime on a local cable system to enable members of the public accredited educational institutions and government to produce their own shows and televise them to a mass audience. Um, municipalities may also choose to take no action and instead keep the franchise fees and general fund. And the municipality may also choose to allow government access and no public access, or they may replace it with government access, or they may take away the public access altogether, depending on the disposition of the local, uh, government and the voters. So, um, I was just, uh, wanting to have my three minutes here to, um, encourage everybody, um, who is going to be making decisions on the future of cable access, to, um, come to some of our meetings, come to the station, um, review the facts, and, um, and before you make your decision, and to include some of the board members in with the public, um, the public, the citizen advisory committee and the budget committee that's going to be meeting soon. Uh, because of, I believe we've received some, um, some memos, you know, from, um, uh, Westland, and a lot of the stuff in the memos isn't exactly correct, um, or accurate. And, um, so we want to be able to sit down, over pizza, and discuss.
Uh, we were, um, David Fraser and myself as president of the, uh, commission last year, uh, had some meetings with members of your board and also with, uh, Westland. Of course, we make our decisions independently of each other. Um, we haven't had any joint meetings for some period of time. And, uh, we'll probably, to keep eye on what's in the budget, uh, what we have in the budget document that will be coming before us to find out what recommended level of, uh, of service that, uh, that, uh, is being recommended to us. And so you might take a look at that budget document. But I do appreciate personally the services that are provided by Willamette Falls, uh, Cable Access. Uh, I know many people that I know have used your services in terms of producing their programs and so forth, as well as of course providing the services to hear many of our different meetings, not only the city commission BDs, but, uh, various other meetings that we do have here, and I do appreciate it. Uh, I don't know, David, uh, did you request before we, um, usually I don't comment, but because of the nature of your request, did you have something you wanted to add to?
I, I just wanted to say one more thing, I wasn't quite done, I'm sorry.
Okay.
I just wanted to say that, um, the important part to me about cable access is the public's, um, access to, um, uh, free speech and the airwaves, that without it, it'll be gone forever.
Chris?
Um, yes, uh, I'd like to request the, my three minutes as a, I'm sure, Oregon City resident and also as a member of the board. Um, I'm a member of the, uh, board here in Oregon City appointed by, uh, um, the previous mayor, uh, Norris. And, um, uh, first of all, I just wanted to thank you all for giving me the time to address you. Um, the reason why I'm here tonight is because we've received a memo from, uh, Mr. Fraser indicating that there is a need to cut $50,000 from the, uh, board, which re- represents the significant reduction in our staffing. Um, we won't be able to provide the services to the community that, um, are vital to, um, informing Oregon City. Um, we have a really unique center here, it is well-staffed currently, and, uh, is providing, uh, amazing amounts of services to the community. I understand the last, um, three quarters, we have provided over 1,300 hours of service in terms of, uh, cam- camcorder and equipment. Uh, we have had over 560 visitors through the center, we have taught 94, 94 students, and we've generated, um, over 1,300 volunteer hours. Um, I have to say that those are difficult times right now, and, uh, it, it is, we don't understand that we're all going to have to tighten our belts, uh, here in Oregon City and around the state. Um, we just, uh, don't want to tighten it so tight that it becomes a noose. Um, unfortunately, right now, the cuts, uh, to the budget of the community access center are much more severe than they are to, um, other departments in the city and, um, part of the reason that we're here is because we just want to, uh, you know, remind you that cable access is part of the community, it provides the vital service. And, um, it's, um, a- also, though, just to remind you that, uh, you've got the unique relationship between cable access and the city. Um, the money that the city gets for cable access, it gets from the franchise fees that, um, cable subscribers pay, so it's unique, it's not like a tax, you know, it's something that's consistent because people, I mean, almost everybody pays for their cable. And the only reason that the city gets that money is because of the, um, work, uh, over 30 years ago to ensure that there were access centers, you know, everywhere. So it's, it's a partnership between the city and the cable access center, and we just, you know, ask you to really be thoughtful, um, in the trust that has been placed in you, uh, by the community, and, uh, try to limit your reductions as much as possible.
I recommend somebody from the board would attend the evaluation.
My bad. Be right back. Thank you.
Depends on what kind of food you're serving.
Thank you guys.
Mr. Fraser. Thank you very much. Mr. Gifford and Mr. Schubert.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. City Council, my name is William Gifford, and I live in Oregon City. I had a couple of quick things to go through today, and if you're going to be talking about this, then your commissioners report later, or, excuse me, or I don't want to trump you, but, um, this morning the city, uh, the Chamber of Commerce met at the Clackamas Community Land Trust, and it was a delightful presentation, and, and I would certainly hope that our listeners are going to find out more about that, uh, low-income housing opportunity. It's out on Morton Street off of Division, and I believe that they're having a, uh, an open house this Sunday as well, I'm sure everybody's aware of that. Secondly.
Someone, Juneberry?
Yes.
Mm-hmm.
Secondly, is that, uh, tomorrow the, uh, Clackamas Children's Center is going to be having their, uh, their ribbon cutting open house at 11 o'clock, and, uh, I sure hope that the, uh, community's going to come out and support that worthwhile activity as well, which is just a few blocks away from the, um, my other, my other comments, first of all, I want to preface everything by saying how much I appreciate all of you on the city council, because I know that tremendous investment that you make and your personal time and sacrifices that you make, and I also understand that you are not the Urban Renewal Commission, I understand that you're just half of that, but, um, as a, as city commissioners, I'm sure that you're also aware that the, there is a municipal code regarding demolition by neglect. And I imagine you're also familiar with the concept of death by a thousand cuts. Um, it's on TV a lot, a lot of crime shows, death by a thousand cuts. Uh, you probably don't watch those.
I, I do, but I didn't know there's.
Let's move to death by a thousand cuts. Anyway, um, the concern that I have is that with the process that the Urban Renewal Commission is going through right now, uh, with the river's decisions that you're going through, I want to make sure that there is no opportunity for, and I'm sure it would be unintentional foot dragging. Um, it seems to me as though time is of the es- essence, and yet it could be seen as an opportunity to delay the whole process to a point where we would lose any opportunity that we have, and I want to make sure that isn't happening. What I'm not clear on is the process, because it really hasn't, the public hasn't heard, I understand you're doing always an executive session, and it's appropriate, but I don't, um, I have not heard publicly about the processes going on insofar as what timeline, by when are you expected to do things? I would imagine that, uh, that you would be giving, uh, or the Urban Renewal Commission would be giving direction to our city manager to be, uh, engaging, uh, the developer once or twice a week, and give and take, and back and forth and back and forth. And I haven't heard any discussion of the process. I'm not asking for details, and I understand there's a million details that need to be resolved and stuff like this, and that you all are trying to find the best solutions for, uh, for the city. But I just want to be assured that there is no, uh, unintentional or intentional foot dragging going on with that.
Just want to assure you that, uh, we're under negotiations versus why it's an executive session.
Danny.
If she'd like me to, if I can, I will clarify the process.
Please.
Okay. So the developer submitted to the city, to the Urban Renewal Commission, a development agreement that is, kind of, a very rough draft, and it's, there's a lot of documentation that is missing from that that needs to be completed. And then, so what we're doing is the commission is meeting an executive session with their attorney, the other side is probably meeting in their office with their attorney, and both sides are negotiating back and forth. And when, my understanding is when Bridgeport happened, for example, with the same developer, there were more than 70 different iterations of the DDA that went back and forth over several months. So, um, when you mentioned foot dragging, I can only say that from our standpoint, we're not going to be d- doing that, but there are other people involved in the transaction that we have no control over, and they may have a different timeline. So I can't guarantee you how fast this will happen, um, but in theory, the process is that this will go back and forth, and so when we get new information, like tonight, we got several pieces of direction from our commissioners, we will then go meet with the developer, we'll present those positions to the developer. The developer will have internal discussions, and they'll decide, can we agree to these things or can't we? That will probably take a period of a few weeks. Then we'll come back to the Urban Renewal Commission and say, this is what the other side says, this is how far we've come. And in theory, you would begin to close that gap over a period of weeks or months, until you get down to a couple of different issues that could be a, a rubber or a deal breaker for somebody. And eventually, uh, through that process, then you may reach an agreement, uh, at least a consensus that the agreement is ripe enough to put on a public agenda, have public input, and that there's enough agreement there that you can have a public forum and a discussion about it, and eventually an upperdown vote on whatever that is. Um, so that's the process. Um, it's, it's, uh, again, it's got a lot of different players involved, so, including a landowner who's different than the developer, which is another interesting wrinkle. So it may take some time.
Yeah.
It, it may take some time, but I can tell you that our commission is fully engaged, our staff of, of two that are working on this are fully committed to trying to be as quick as we can in responding, but, um.
That's the most information we've heard in weeks, and I understand that the DDA has been around for a while, so it's nice to have some feedback.
I will add to that, William. We determine in executive session that, that DDA submitted by the developer is a public record protected by no exemptions, and that it is available to the public upon request.
And then you'll know how much work we have to do when you see how long it's dragging.
I'll bet. Thanks for that, appreciate it.
Sure.
Spidercock, uh, resident here in Oregon City, and, uh, and, uh, much longer in the last few months to the commissioners and the mayor here, thank you again for allowing me to come speak for you. I won't have to waste any more of the commission's time, I realize you've already had a long evening, uh, that you've spent, and I just also wanted to, to, uh, see, uh, exactly the same thing as William saw, what the type of, uh, progress that we have been making so far, and, uh, thank you, uh, Mr. Fraser, for, for that very informative, uh, thing, and, and, um, my support and, uh, my congratulations to the commission for moving ahead on this, and, uh, Mayor Neely, uh, yourself, so I won't waste any more of your commission's time.
Any others? Same room. Um, is there, uh, a, is there anything, any problem with, in without the agenda? Have a motion to do so? Yes, go ahead.
Um, I'd like to, um, uh, remove their, um, minutes, um, just for a separate vote.
Okay. Which minute?
Hold outside.
Not the study session, but the commissioners?
Commission minutes, I think it's, 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 March 16th.
Okay. Boring the minutes, uh, March 16th, to, uh, the, um, motion on the agenda, minus those particular minutes.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those speakers, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay. We'll continue on with the agenda. So, like, you're right. Well, all of yours. We've got public hearings, and the public hearings we have is a, firstly, presenting the water master plan, planning file E10, uh, anyway, the president is going to be, uh, speaking to us will be Phil McCorkle.
Uh, thank you. Mayor, even commissioners, um, we're requesting that, um, for the water master plan, we're updating the water master plan through the legislative process, uh, this needs to go through the finding commission, they'll make a recommendation, and that will be before the city commission. Uh, the public works director and the finance director are still, um, reviewing the documents and some of the funding implications, um, as a result of the recommendations in the study. So we are requesting that, um, you open the public hearing tonight, take any comments from any citizens who wish to speak tonight, and then continue, uh, the hearing with the record open to June 15th, uh, 2011.
Okay, I'll open the public hearing. Is there anybody here that wishes to speak to the water master plan? And then we close it. I have a motion for continuance to date through?
Yes, of June 15th, 2011.
I have a motion for continuance to June 15th.
A continuance of the public hearing?
Well, we'll be, we'll open the public hearing again.
So moved.
All, uh, in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed, as you had to say. Alright. Uh, we have under, um, that was it, I guess now we're under general business. Uh, I'm going to ask a question again, when we, even if we're having second readings, um, why ordinances don't come under our public hearing, in case we wish to open the public hearing on the second reading? Is there a reason?
Um, it just, an ordinance is, um, a general business item, and it is a, uh, an opportunity for the public to speak to that item, they're, they're welcome to speak to any item on the agenda. It's not a formal public hearing that needs to be noticed, such as a land use case, something like that. Um, we do notice ordinances according to code, um, but it's not, uh, per se a formal public hearing.
There's no legal requirement holding during, on this type of work.
Okay, very good.
The reason that the, the second readings are under general business is because our code requires that it's read into the records title. Otherwise, it could go on the consent.
Well, I'm not down to 10%, but I get to 100%. I just miniaturized my, uh, my, uh, report card. Okay, here we go, thank you. The, uh, alright, and we'll get the presentation by Nancy Crashar.
I think we're on 7:8.
Alright, alright.
Second reading of ordinance 11-1002, and ordinance admitting title 15, building in construction, chapter 15, 40, fire code section 1540 of Oregon City Municipal Code of 1991, in enacting a new title 15, building in construction, chapter 1540, fire code section 1540.
Now, if I have a little call.
Commissioner Rock?
Hi.
Commissioner Smith?
Alright.
Commissioner Nesea?
Hi.
Commissioner Mom?
Hi.
Mayor Neely?
Yes. Alright, uh, motion passes, you have this one? Um, to have it your side, uh, your side, yours.
Um, I, my, my, uh, wife told me they didn't need to be trimmed, and I, I said it's all or nothing. Ended up being nothing.
We now have a, uh, question, a bid reward, approval of construction contract in the amount of $2,885,000 of Emmett Construction for Beauregard Construction, and I think without the commission report, I think that'll be stronger.
Yes, it is, Mr. Mayor. Um, we, uh, are asking for the, uh, approval of the, um, of the bid and the, and the award of the, the contract to Emirate Construction, this is the replacement of the boat ramp at Sport Craft Landing, we've been, uh, waiting to do this for quite a while, we've, uh, finally completed a lengthy permitting process that, uh, took quite a bit longer than we had hoped it would, but, uh, we've now got all the permits in hand, and we, we bid the project, um, we bid the project an open bid, uh, it's a favorable bidding market, um, we received 15 total bids. Um, the, the low bid is actually, um, under our engineer's estimate, and it's well within our budget, and, um, so, uh, again, it is a favorable, favorable market right now. Um, uh, just to remind the commission, this project is being funded in, um, uh, at the following rates, uh, 40% from the, um, Department Fish and Wildlife through the sport fish restoration, um, funding, uh, 40% from the Oregon State Marine Board, and 20% matched from the city. So we are paying for 20% of the project, and, and essentially, um, state and federal, uh, funding will pay for 80% from the grant that we've had in hand for a while. So basically, the Marine Board, Oregon State Marine Board is our partner in this project, and, uh, they've been an active partner for the city in helping us with numerous, numerous projects, and, and this is a, a site that they're very interested in. So, um, we are, are, assuming the bid award goes forward, um, we will be doing this during the in-water work period of the summer, uh, which is roughly is July through October. So it'd be, it'd be completed by this fall. So there'll be some disruption of service at the site, although, um, our, our local boaters and anglers have been wanting this project done for quite a while, that we had a few trailers drop off the end of our ramp that is not in such good shape, and, and so there's definitely, uh, there's going to be some disruption, but at the same time, it'll be a really good project, it'll be a significant, not, not just repaired, but, but it'll actually be an improvement. Um, it'll be two lanes, so you'll have two separate, uh, put, uh, put-in sites, uh, with a, uh, a floating dock down the middle of that, so you can access boats from, from both sides of that, so it'll be, it'll be a, a great improvement, so. Uh, with that, I'm just, again, asking for your approval of the contract, so we can move forward, and be happy to answer questions.
If you would, I would.
Yeah, I was just thinking, what I'm, I was just curious about this, our dates, so, later summer.
This one question, I was, we're using general funds, often as we're able to use SDCs for this purpose, is that, is that the key, we couldn't do, do it, or?
Correct, uh, we could not use, we cannot use SDCs for this project because it's a renovation project, not, not a, uh, a new project.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, I hear a move to accept the bid?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? I think I'm going to let Nancy Crashar speak.
Thank you, good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Um, before you start, you have the first reading of ordinance 11-1003, and it is, pertains to the vacation of a section of Paquette Street that will, um, essentially add to the land that is supplanting the neighborhood children's park, and, um, adding that land will, um, enable them to complete the master plan. It was a condition of approval of the land use decision for the children's park that this, uh, right-of-way be vacated. The, the right-of-way at this location really has no value to the city's public, in my opinion, and, um, you, it would be great to expand the park. So I'm recommending the vacation of this, tonight's the first reading, there'll be a second reading at the next meeting if you approve this first reading. And just for the record, the, the, um, resolution, uh, convincing this process was actual February 16th meeting, and, uh, again, for the record, in the ordinance itself, we mistakenly indicated that it would be heard and considered on Wednesday, April 6th, 2011, and it, that would have, that should have been February 16th, 2011, and I believe you have that correction at your, like, at your, uh, desk tonight.
Alright, I hear any comments other than my own, I'm wrapping this up on this, but is there somebody else? You, you made reference to expanding the park.
This will go to the park property.
Uh, it's be, being vacated to the city and not to adjacent private, uh, homes?
This particular, well, Metro's on the other side, and our, um, engineering group researched the plaques for this and determined that, um, it was most appropriate to go to the one property rather than be split. You, you, normally, we do split between the two property owners, but in this situation, we were not able to determine that that would be the appropriate, um, properties receiving the vacation.
And then Metro didn't care, then, say aye?
Yeah. I actually have been in conversations, obviously, with Metro because of the partnership on the Canadian Park Project, and they're, they're supportive of this, it was, there were going to be some hoops that we would have had to have jumped through hadn't half of it gone to Metro, then we would have had to have gone back and revisited some agreements and things, so this works out well for both.
Okay. I hear a motion for the addition.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Motion, either, uh, in, uh, second, by, uh, Commissioner Rock.
And it's number 11-1003, an ordinance vacating a section of Paquette Street, formerly known as First Street, located between Third and Fourth Avenues, Canadiana area, all within the Canadiana subdivision platte, platte number six, Clackamas County, City of Oregon, City of Oregon.
I hear a speaking on quick, this is. And hearing comments other than my own, I'm wrapping this up on this, but is there somebody else? You, you made reference to expanding the park.
This will go to the park property.
Uh, it's being vacated to the city and not to adjacent private, uh, homes?
This particular, well, that throws it on the other side. And our, um, engineering group researched the plaques for this and determined that, um, it was most appropriate to go to the one property rather than be split. You, normally we do see it split between the two property owners, but in this situation, we were not able to determine that that would be the appropriate, um, properties receiving the vacation.
And then Metro didn't care?
Yeah. I actually have been in conversations, obviously, with Metro because of the partnership on the Canadian Park project and they're, they're supportive of this. It was, there were gonna be some hoops that we would have had to have jumped through hadn't half of it gone to Metro. Then we would have had to have gone back and revisited some agreements and things. So this works out well for both.
I hear a motion for the addition.
Seven.
Second?
Second.
Motion either, uh, in the second by, uh, Commissioner Rock.
And it's number eleven dash one zero zero three, an ordinance vacating a section of Paquette Street, formerly known as First Street, located between Third and Fourth Avenues, Canadian area, all within the Canadian subdivision platte, platte number six, Clackamas County, City of Oregon, City of Oregon.
I hear a speaking on quick, this, I didn't make the mistake to find it again before the first reading. We call the open.
Commissioner Rock?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Nacida?
Aye.
Commissioner Mom?
Aye.
Mayor Neely?
That motion passes, yes. All right. Well, now we're. Yeah, this is for, no, that's okay. This is for, uh, ordinance, uh, uh, for introduction of a, uh, that'll amend our, our, our chapter ten, uh, to the municipal code relating to parking. And read this, uh, Earth Day, is that right?
Yes, that's correct, Mayor. Uh, and Commissioners, uh, another, another introduction of, in first reading of an ordinance, this is ordinance eleven dash one zero zero four. It would amend chapter ten point one six of the Oregon City Municipal Code, it's related to our parking plan implementation. And, um, in, uh, in a nutshell, this is, this is kind of a housekeeping item. We, um, as you know, we've moved forward and are moving forward on the implementation, um, of the downtown parking plan based on the strategies outlined in our, um, adopted parking study. Uh, back in February, on February sixteenth, um, the commission adopted parking meter and pay station fee increases. Well, in our code, we don't have language giving us the authority to collect at these new, uh, uh, parking stations. These, uh, where you put one on a block and you, you pay, kind of like if you went into Portland, they pay for parking in, uh, on a street. So we're gonna be, as, as we've talked with, with you, the commission about a number of times, we're moving towards gradually installing these over, over time. We're gonna do the first phase of those this summer when we roll out, as we, um, roll out that first phase of the parking plan as well as the, um, the downtown circulation plan that's being worked on. We're kind of trying to time that first phase of that with that plan. So anyway, the, the code currently doesn't give us the authority to collect from these, uh, meter, uh, stations. And that's simply what, what this amendment is doing, is giving us the authority to do that. We can collect at parking meters, but not at these pay stations. So, um, uh, with that, I'd be happy to answer any of the questions, but that's basically what this is.
Are there any questions, uh, in this room?
I have a question. This is going to sound very strange. Is there anything in the code about decorating the parking meters?
Uh, not that I'm aware of.
Um, there's, there's decorating along downtown on parking meters, and I'm just wondering if that's something you want to address.
Look into that. I'm not, is there a specific, anything you can tell me more specific about that? I'm not sure.
It's not an impressioning.
Okay.
There's appearing on different meters.
I'm, I'm not sure what the, uh, the code says is allowable or not, but I'll, I'll take a look.
Okay. Well, it's, it's nice, but it, it gets bad looking more soon.
Okay.
That's the, uh, that's the end of our regular business.
Well, we did hold on.
I, I live to, uh, approve the first reading of ordinance number eleven dash one one, one zero zero four.
Second.
Second.
So here from Commissioner Smith?
It's number eleven dash one zero zero four, an ordinance of the City of Oregon City, amending chapter ten point one six of the Oregon City Municipal Code relating to parking.
Open please.
Commissioner Rock?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Nacida?
Aye.
Commissioner Mom?
Aye.
Mayor Neely?
Aye. All right, now we're going to see if we can avoid all this stuff, we get through the meeting right, a lot faster, clear all these holes. But we're going to the consent agenda, uh, minus the, uh, mess. I hear, um, move it to pass the consent agenda.
So moved.
Um, you did have to begin.
No, we actually passed.
Well, that's, that's right. That's right. Excuse me. Uh, then we'll come to the minutes of March sixteen, two thousand one.
Um, I didn't have any issue. I just was not present at that meeting, so I just wanted it pulled.
Yes, we'll take a separate motion on the minutes of March sixteen.
I knew, I moved to approve.
Second?
Second.
Both all boys?
Commissioner Rock?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
I'm saying.
Commissioner Nacida?
Aye.
Commissioner Mom?
Aye.
Mayor Neely?
Right. Continue rolling communications to the board.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Okay, we have a few things tonight. I want to mention the city hall here, we're, we're doing, we're participating in the food bank drive and we have a big barrel out there. So if any of you want to bring in things to contribute to our food barrel list right outside the lobby here, and our employees have been putting things in there all week. And that brings me to my first thing I want to report tonight, the Pioneer Center, uh, March fourth meals fundraising campaign. And in particular, the Clackamas Federal Credit Union gave us a, a donation of twenty-three hundred dollars for that. And, um, so I just wanted to make sure the commission knew that's a good, a good thing that's happened. Also, uh, we got a grant this week for nine thousand seven hundred and sixty dollars for a camera system that I believe is gonna be installed at the police station. So that's another, um, point fall for the week. And then, um, I want to let you know that, um, the mayor and I talked about the evaluation process and I know, I thank you all in advance. I'm assuming you completed the ICMA online portion of that, but I also think you might want another crack at me. So we're gonna, we're gonna, uh, have a, a form similar to the one we used last time and we'll, uh, Terry will be getting in touch and you can set up one-on-one meetings with me to go over that form. And, uh, I'll also be setting out tomorrow, um, the form, my own self-evaluation and there's instructions on there on how to complete the form. And, and then we'll, of course, have an executive session to discuss the results, um, at the end of the month. Also, I wanted to let you know that, um, as you know, the budget has gone to the printer. Uh, should be back and ready for distribution Tuesday, the twelfth. Um, that's what we're hoping anyway. And then, um, I'm just gonna pass this down. You, you folks, I think some of you probably participate in the Earth Day, the various clean-up events here in Oregon City. And we have one coming up, um, right away. In fact, um, you can meet between eight and nine P M., check in for registration at Clackamas Park, uh, for the event. And that is Saturday, April sixteenth. And, uh, there, I've got a little sheet here on it. One of the things I have highlighted is the singer hill planting, uh, because that's one of the things that Rovere has been sort of excited about. So I'll just pass that out for anybody that wants to participate. And I believe, uh, did you use something? I covered that? Okay. Any other department is that? I don't think anybody else has anything. Yeah, and I'm gonna ask Tony Conville to talk about the Blue Heron, uh, sort of the protections and safeguards the city has in place that are public. We didn't get to those before, but I want you to, um, have that opportunity. Um, before I, I go to Tony though, I want to say just a word about the WFTV, the Willamette Falls TV, the folks that were here tonight. When I came to Oregon City, I, a year ago, I sort of inherited, uh, opportunity, or if you will, um, to get involved in that, in that process. And I think what, what I found is that, um, the city is paying about a hundred thousand dollars a year for its contribution and Westland was doing about the same. But the last couple of years, the City of Oregon City has put in significantly more than Westland. The IGA, um, contemplates that both cities will put in equal amounts into that. And so even though Westland kept cutting back on their amount, Oregon City kept stepping up more than a hundred thousand. So we're sort of out of balance in what they've put in and what we've put in. This year, Westland has determined that they're gonna cut their a hundred thousand back to fifty. To give some of our new commissioners some history there, uh, Mayor Neely and I have worked with a committee, uh, from Westland and met with folks from Willamette Falls last year trying to get a, a change to the way they operate so that we could get a, a full audit of the books and get better control on the costs there. And, um, we even talked about amending the IGA and so forth. And as much as we thought we were getting somewhere, we, in the end, the, the board then, as it was then composed, wasn't very excited about making any changes. And, um, this year, Westland is budgeting fifty thousand. And so in my, from my perspective, for that disparity not to get even worse, I had to look at that and seriously ask myself if I could make a recommendation to the budget committee that was responsible for that kind of amount, the same hundred thousand. And I, and I think that is not only inconsistent with our IGA, but it isn't seen fair to Oregon City. I will say on the positive side though, I think that some of the new leadership at Willamette Falls have met with me. And I think they are gonna be looking at ways that they can better contain their costs. They also have a significant amount in cash reserves there by a percentage, I would say about five times as much as any city in Oregon, as a percentage. So it's not like they're gonna close the next day. It just means that they're gonna have to be a little bit more careful about how they budget. And then there's another, another important factor, as I went to the, uh, Chris Jordan, the city manager from Westland, and I both mentioned this at the last regional city manager meeting because some of our regional city manager partners, like Milwaukee, for example, have contracts with WFTV and they get the service for about thirty thousand a year. And of course, Chris and I are saying, well, you know, part of the reason you're getting it for thirty is that we're each paying a hundred. And we'd like you to pay a fair share of that instead of us shouldering the entire amount. I want the same thirty thousand dollar deal you're getting. And we, and Chris and I asked him if they would volunteer to pay more, and of course, they didn't. Uh, so it sort of left us in, in the lurch as far as what do we budget that is responsible, but will still stimulate WFTV to look at some of the ways that they're doing business and see where they can be more efficient. And I think that will happen. I'm, I'm confident that that will happen. But I, I'm a little nervous too, because I'm afraid that if Westland gets pushed too hard in any direction, you know, this, this entity exists because the two cities are both putting in, you know, presumably equal amounts. If either one of the cities pull out of this thing, there is no Willamette Falls TV. The entity dissolves. And so at some point, you gotta ask yourself, is it, is it better to make sure that they're still at the table and still, we still have an agreement, we still have an entity, uh, to begin with? Uh, because I think if you push that too hard in this kind of environment, it's, it could backfire. So I put in fifty thousand, um, that's fifty thousand less than they got last year from Oregon City. But I still, I think for our contribution, if you look the last few years, we're still putting in, we, we've made a very significant contribution to them. So that, that'll be the budget, uh, committee's decision and I'm okay with whatever they decide. But I had to do what I thought was the responsible thing and, and that's what I've done. So, um, with that, I'll turn it over to Tony to talk to you a little bit about protections we have on Blue Heron.
Thank you. So tonight I handed out, um, a memo, uh, a little fact sheet on Blue Heron. It, it identified the four tax lots that are owned by, uh, Blue Heron, the one tax lot identified TGE. It identifies their tax lot numbers and the acreages, approximate acreages associated with each of those tax lots. Just give basic zoning information on the property. It's general industrial, the comprehensive plan designation of industrial. Um, it has several overlays, including the Willamette River, natural resource overlay district, um, flood management, geologic hazards. Uh, we provided just a brief, um, history of the, um, of the site, um, as well as, while we, you know, there's, there were historic buildings located on the property, but it's not located within a local or national, uh, historic district. Uh, there is no inventory of the site, uh, that the city is aware of, that we have, or that we have done. If there were, in the redevelopment of the site, if there were federal funds associated with the redevelopment of that site, um, and, and a historic inventory of the site may be necessary in order to, um, receive those, that federal funding. Uh, we also identified several of the land use files that we were able to find, going back to our system, that have occurred on the site. In order to get to a mixed-use type of development, you'd have to do a comprehensive plan amendment from industrial to most likely mixed-use downtown to be consistent with what's adjacent to it as well as the zone change. Uh, we also identified some of the comprehensive plan policies, specifically policy two point two point one two, which states that, um, if we ensure a master plan is developed at the Blue Heron Paper Company site at such times the property owner proposes a large-scale development, which addresses transitioning the overall site from industrial to non-industrial land uses. So if this site does transition from industrial to some other type of a mixed-use, commercial, retail, uh, residential type of a use, you're looking at a comprehensive plan amendment from industrial to most likely mixed-use downtown. A zone change associated with that from general industrial to mixed-use downtown as well. And then they'd also have to do a master plan, uh, on the site, um, through our master planning process.
Time, quick question for you. Does our mixed-use downtown zoning permit industrial or manu, light manufacturing processes?
No.
Do we have any type of zoning that is the kind of mixed-use employment or mixed-use industrial as opposed to strictly mixed-use downtown?
No, we do not. What we did with mixed-use downtown, for example, Miles Fiber Less, we, when we wrote the mixed-use down, downtown code and we adopted it in two thousand and four, was specifically identify certain type, certain tax lots and said that they could continue that industrial use indefinitely as an outright permitted use. But to start a new industrial use in the mixed-use downtown would not be allowed the way our current code is written. So that was probably something where we have to go back and amend the code to address that.
So we could create a new zone? Okay. Um, one of the issues that I've heard in discussion is, for example, the desire to retain some type of, say specialty paper manufacturing, uh, with some of the Blue Heron, um, equipment. It sounds that that wouldn't be permissible under the M U D.
No, that's what it's currently written.
Okay. Okay. Well, let me follow up with one more. Do you know of any other city that has some type of animal like that, kind of like a mixed-use, um, employment slash light industrial zone?
Um, I would, I would need to look into it. I, I guess, you know, it depends on how far you want to allow, what type of industrial you wanna, you wanna allow. You know, there's, you know, there's certain industrial uses that are probably, could be compatible in a residential neighborhood. And, uh, I guess I'd have to look into that a little bit to, to see to what extent they allow these, what we would consider more of these heavy industrial uses with residential component, allowed outright, right next to or on top of or adjacent to.
Okay, thanks.
Um, I have a couple of questions on, on the site. The PGE, um, is that funny little Z that, what is that? So it is, it's an access. And then these white areas are Enders, right? Bob Enders owns.
I'm sorry, the white areas?
The white area that doesn't have a, this, this free tax lot, the one that Bob Enders owns.
Okay, do you have that?
Pardon? I don't know if we're supposed to pay for this.
I identified all, I think it is, there's five tax lots. I don't, we, we didn't go back and look. I don't believe, that, that white spot, I think is just a, a map in discrepancy. So, um, on the previous maps, we identified all the tax lots that we were identifying on the site.
But the accessory office gave me his name as owning tax lots down there.
Well, we'll need to look into that a little bit more.
Yeah. And so I'm wondering how that affects the whole thing.
It would.
Yeah.
Different ownership.
Yes.
What triggers the change in the zone? And we said, um, until the industrial use goes away, not specifically that Blue Heron goes away, is that correct?
Correct. So, so if another industrial use moved in there, I don't believe that the master plan requirements required.
At what point? At what point? Would a change in the zone be triggered?
Well, if it's under private ownership, that'd be up to the, either the private owner or the city came in and, and, and that process with a willing or unwilling property. I think the other, I was gonna say, the other, you know, we, we've kind of identified a couple of the issues. One of the big issues, um, going from, let's just say the property owner does want to proceed with some type of a mixed-use, um, zoning on the property. Um, changing the comprehensive plan designation requires compliance with the transportation planning rule, which requires that you show the transportation system is adequate. And we look at a twenty-year horizon when we look at that. So it needs to be adequate the day it opens, as well as in twenty years, all the, all the transportation system, as well as all the time in between there. Uh, yeah, in that twenty years. Uh, so what you see is you have general industrial where their trips are generally much, much lower than if you took that twenty acres and developed however many acres of it. It's okay to rezone it all, you have to assume the worst case. So the amount of trips generated from the site are made significant. Compliance with TPR, the transportation planning rule on this site, um, I think will be, will be a challenge. I think it's something we'll need to look closer with, with ODOT on, uh, with impacts on ninety, ninety-nine E as well as two oh five on ramps and off ramps. So that's one, one hurdle we, we've identified upfront.
We've noted that passports at GLCD working, we're seeing a lot of their, their, some issues raised by cities that say, whether there will be a payment, but will be paid back as well.
But those will be the, one of the major issues you will be seeing if uh, such a request were to move forward. Or even if we were to do this, we would still need to comply with that TPR rule um, as well.
What I've seen of the proposed TPR changes, um, some of them are favorable for the kind of development that many communities are looking for in regional centers and mixed use developments. And um, but, and recognizing that the Oregon Transportation Commission and GLCD are working on what, how should we change the TPR so we can allow economic development and communities to grow the way they wanna grow, regardless of the transportation system. So, but even if we didn't have to comply and the, and the TPR rules didn't change enough. Doing a trans- transportation impact study for this future site is going to be a challenge in terms of um, making, making it work. The trip generation there could be considerable enough. And I'm not at all putting a blanket on any of this. I'm just wanting to make sure people are aware that the capacity of ninety nine, the Blockham Boulevard along there and accesses from it are very limited. And that will be a major part of going forward with actually getting something on the ground down there.
Are we going to be limited at all by the already inadequate two oh five Abernathy Bridge in, in the plan with this?
It's very possible. But that's something it's, it's, I think we would be shooting ourselves in the foot if we said it was such a hurdle we couldn't get over. Because I think you have to remain optimistic about those kinds of things. And um, we're also looking at alternative mobility standards for the Portland metro area. Which again, may or may not apply, apply to federal highways or state facilities. But again, the Oregon Transportation Commission is well aware that these issues are out here for communities like ours. And they wanna work with us to um, come up with different mobility standards so that we can make some of these great developments happen. Whatever that great development might be down there, I have no idea what it would be.
Nancy, uh, regarding these limitations, is that only if the zoning is changed? Because if it remained general industrial, would, you know, whatever inadequacies exist now, would it be grandfathered or?
Right. The, the, the TPR, the transportation planning rule requirements go into place if there's a zone change or a comprehensive plan change. But even with the existing zoning, when you do your transporta- your traffic impact study, you still have to show that the system can accommodate your traffic. And then you need to make improvements in areas where the improvements need to be made. So it's still complicated, and I have no idea what, what kind of generation we'll be looking at for the site.
And I, and I think the other, the other issue that we did identify as well is that obviously, you know, Oregon City as well as the region as a whole has residency and employment in industrial lands. And you'd be, if you did make a change to mixed use, let's just say went to mixed use downtown. You would be taking general industrial, twenty-two acres of general industrial land out of that inventory. And how you, you know, how we, how we, how we comply with um, you know, meeting our industrial needs for the city, um, would be something we'd, we'd wanna be thinking about. Um, if we are going to take these twenty-two acres out of um, industrial employment eligible lands.
This is worth coming in that. Main Street, I always saw extended further in. I know the road is there, but uh, we don't, we don't, we don't own all of that road.
Cur- currently?
No.
Yeah, correct. It, it just extends in a little bit. The rest of it was vacated. Um, you can look at the, the historic. I've included the um, the, the sandborne maps, which show the old class and what the, the, the old lining patterns, street right of ways were um, originally. Um, but yes, all those water and, and main were all vacated throughout the years.
Anything, anything else you, you said here to say? Uh, I guess I'm on next. March twenty-second, uh, they had the ground, the groundbreaking ceremony for the carri train there. As you're standing from Milwaukee to the border of Bladeton. A person that, a lot of stuff I know, Helen Haginmore, has been working and promoting that project for years and years. I think her services are near Oregon City pretty near. And uh, she was there, she was one of the, I believe she was one of the groundbreakers. Uh, lots of, lots of people, both from Metro, it's a Metro project, uh, part of the trails program. Uh, people from Milwaukee uh, were there as well. And it was a, it was a very, it was a very great event. And uh, the area from which they, um, most of the event was operating there was a, a nice, a nice park area, which had a nice streaming base. On um, Monday, March twenty-eighth, uh, they were giving tours of the children's center, which we're gonna have, which is Mr. Grover. We're gonna have a ribbon cutting ceremony on, on Thursday, eleven AM. But uh, they were giving tours, it's a really great facility. The children's center was located for several years in a, in a house, and it was just too small to provide those tools. And the purpose of the children's centers is to evaluate children that are, presumably have been abused. And there's a mechanism where the various service providers can all take part and usually behind the window uh, in terms of the interview process of the, of the child. So that the child doesn't have to have an interview and probably tell people and then the police and so forth. This is all done at the same time, reduce the traumatic uh, effects of that kind of activity. It's a great center. Before that center came into being, and I think it's about ten or fifteen years ago. Children have to go all the way into a local clinic for those kinds of evaluations. And the children's center has been a tremendous asset in the city and quite a sell in the city. I'm sure that uh, our police chief is well aware of the tremendous services they provide. There are people now to handle uh, uh, two, two evaluations at the same time. The facility is quite large. And uh, I guess they usually do two or three a day. Uh, and uh, so it's a, it's a great asset if anybody can make that river, ribbon kind of ceremony, I'm sure I'd remember. The uh, on April first was the climate leadership forum. Much of it had to do with uh, input from various members of the community. And the trends of, things that are still to have in effect, um, reducing greenhouse uh, emissions was uh, phase leading of traffic and accessibility. On the top, we're synchronizing lighting, signal lighting within the community. Uh, another thing is, is in having mixed use corridors of residential housing that can be located on these transportation uh, corridors. They're ranked as the two most uh, important things that would have an effect on, on uh, on, on reducing the uh, greenhouse emissions. And it is already announced that we're having the city clean, clean up on April sixteenth. We've nine o'clock, meeting time at the
Taken as at eight?
Registration, registration from eight o'clock. Uh, there are several sites that will be involved. Uh, the city will provide some tools, but people might want to bring their own who are gonna participate as well.
That's correct.
And uh, are there any other reports from any other commission?
Well
Oh, excuse me.
Do you want to make some appointments?
Yes. We, we, I interviewed, uh, in this case, I've interviewed, um, um, I, I've had, excuse me, the Parks and Recreation Committee. Uh, interviewed people for an appointment that had just uh, opened up on the Parks and Recreation Committee. And uh, appointed to Don Smith. Uh, he was a, he was an exceptional addition. Uh, he's, he's been involved in water sports recreation activities, a great interest in, of his. And it's gonna be a tremendous, uh, tremendous addition to the Parks and Recreation Committee. And together with uh, David Wimmer, uh, we interviewed people to serve on the Urban Renewal Budget Committee. And uh, we appointed to Aaron Olson and uh, and Sean Dashler. Uh, Dash, Dashler's in the case, and so three-year appointment. We did have three people apply, but one of which lived outside the city. And it was clear in the state statutes that the budget committee, citizen budget committee ma- members had to be city residents. It turns out that Senator Dashler will not be able to attend this particular budget committee meeting. But he, uh, simply because uh, uh, he had made arrangements for, for a trip long before. But he's very interested in, in serving, having no other members that we could choose from. We've appointed him and, and Aaron Olson to stay here in, uh, in, in two thousand thirteen. And now I guess I get to turn over the uh, the mic to other people. And I see Jim, I see his, his professionalism, I see that, his request to stay.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Mayor. I just have one item to chat about. Uh, recently, the Oregon City News reported on the mutual interest between the city of Oregon City and um, well, not the city per se, but um, members of the community of Oregon City and Clackamas Community College in building a relationship with Concordia University up in North Portland. Uh, week ago today, um, uh, the city commission, minus the mayor, who was unable to join us. Uh, but including city manager Fraser and Chuck Clemmons, a board member of Clackamas Community College, uh, took a tour. And met with, um, well, wasn't, more of a, a, a discussion, less of a tour with uh, executives from Concordia University to just explore um, points of uh, common interest. And a lot of neat things came out of it. Uh, we'll be following up with some of them. We're hoping to have a presentation by executives from Concordia. Here at City Hall in the not-too-distant future. And uh, Chuck Clemmons, um, discussed a lot of the possible points of cooperation and development of a relationship between Concordia and Clackamas Community College. And uh, an interesting um, sidelight or highlight. Sorry, I'm confusing words here. Highlight of uh, the, the, the discussion afterwards was one of the um, uh, members of the executive team of Concordia kind of buttonholed Commissioner Roth and I after the meeting. And asking us a lot of questions, and we later received an email from him uh, about a fairly significant potential economic development opportunity which we will be sharing with staff um, uh, right away.
Um, yeah, I could send a couple of things here. One of them is in conjunction with that um, meeting you have with Concordia, we would like to um, immediately begin forming a group called Friends of Concordia, or something similar to Friends of Concordia. To not only welcome them to town, but to become um, a, a fundraising, so we can, you know, give them support and, and backing. So we're looking for people that are interested in bringing up. And then um, we had local harvest tree planting at Eastham School on Saturday morning. And that was, I, I was very impressed. That was a very nice, um, what was it, twenty to thirty people in? Uh, and I got a blister, but I don't think they've got any blisters. And um, they planted just a lot of nice trees and berry bushes and all kinds of things there. And then Saturday, this Saturday at ten o'clock up at CCC out in the Environmental Learning Center. Honored Oregon will be doing the second half of their presentation for um, working on the Commons of Oregon City. So everyone's welcome to attend that.
Um, I just wanted to make a couple of comments. I did attend the um, Cable Access Board meeting. So it did bring up some questions for me, David, and we'll, we'll have to discuss them. Something about, um, the city wants them to pay thirty-five hundred dollars back because we overpaid and something like this. I'm not sure about that, but
That's not anything I've ever seen in that.
Seventeen this year and seventeen the next, but anyways, we'll talk about that.
That was just one of the options for them to get equal, for us to get equal with Westland, that's how much the gap was?
Yeah.
And we said, Westland can pay more, and of course, they didn't want to. And I said, well, then you guys could give us part of that back so that we get equal.
And then the other
They didn't want to. So we gave them fifty thousand more and said, that's as good as we can do.
The other question is, it's a franchise fee, so where does that money go? If it doesn't go there, and how much is that money? Is it only fifty? Is it a hundred thousand? I don't know. I have no idea.
Get a breakdown for me, finance.
What was in that provision? For the budget meeting? And uh, as, as well as the income on the outflow for?
Um, if I might ask you, Commissioner Mumm, if you can just send, email me all the questions that you might have. And anyone else that might have questions? And then we'll get that to you before you get to the meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, and when you come to that meeting, just, just for preparation sake, and so we don't blindside you. The various users of that, I mean, you mentioned one, uh, well, you mentioned seven. But then all the various users of that facility, what they, what they have.
We, yeah, we asked how many people from Oregon City actually came to the city and use it.
I recognize that there's a lot of benefit to that. Oh, no, that's not the question I'm asking. You, you, the way they did, they counted in thirty thousand, but there were, I think Milwaukee pays, and I think there are others.
They have a number of subscribers, that's what they're contrasting.
If you could bring in the information on
I don't, I don't know if I have it.
Okay.
Oh, that would be, yeah.
Their information, but if they get those, we'll bring in whatever they have. You can include that in the questions. That'll probably be among them.
Yeah.
And we'll try to get answers for you.
The franchise fees are very interesting.
Are there any other?
You know, I neglected to say one thing. I don't know how many of you saw the nearly ten inch caliber burrow tree that was plant, planted at Carnegie. Uh, but our own public, our own park director, Scott Archer, made that happen. Scott, I just wanna thank him and recognize that.
Yeah, it's very scum.
They have this very big caliber trees over there.
And those guys can live nine hundred years, so that's fantastic.
We're gonna put a, we're, we're gonna guarantee that we don't cut it down for five years.
As long as it doesn't become a danger to our life and safety.
As long as the meeting, we are, we can meet in the executive session.
After a break.